Good evening. If you would at this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you physically present in the council chamber who wish to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes to speak. Right now, I will call to order and convene the regular city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor Rudy Chacona, the Living Word Church, Inland Empire, and council member Sylvia Robles will be leading our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Precious Father, Lord, I just want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. I pray for the mayor, her family, and her husband. I pray that you put a hedge of protection around her. I pray that you give her wisdom and understanding how to lead Grand Terrace, Lord. I pray for the city council. I pray for all the people that work for Grand Terrace. I pray for the residents in Grand Terrace. I pray that your hand will be upon them. I thank you, Lord, and I praise you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. This began, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, Pastor Rudy. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Procham Hussey?
Present.
Mayor McNamee?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda tonight?
No additions or doations.
All right, thank you. And we have no special presentations, so we will move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and controversial, non-controversial. There will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? All right, seeing no requests, I will entertain a motion for the consent.
I'll move to pass the consent calendar in full, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the next item is public comment for items not appearing on the agenda. Do we have requests to speak during this time? Okay. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter be agendized for future meeting with the concurrence of the council. Thank you. So our speaker is Juanita Odenbaugh.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Juanita Odenbaugh. I live at 21811 Vivienda Avenue in Grand Terrace. Talking about the project that I live above on the bluff, and it is the trailer truck storage. It's also the CUP 19-01. This project has brought my family and I many conflicts. Errant semi-trucks trailers going through the neighborhood since July 2021, and most recently on September 6, 2022. The CUP 1901 has no tolerance for semi-trucks driving through the adjacent neighborhood and related to this project. The adjacent neighborhood streets were not built for this type of heavy traffic, and you can tell when you go through there. Signs that had been up in the adjacent neighborhood are useless to this day because semi-trucks still make their way through the neighborhood. Lack of communication on July 28, the neighborhood meeting at the fitness park, the city manager stated the company TSG will start operations on August 1, while they thought they'd start on July 29, and then continue over the weekend. When I asked the city manager what the hours were, the city manager did not know. Well, the operational hours are during the week and no weekends, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's no set hours. It's been through my family's documentation that the truck trailer storage yard operates at 3:30 a.m., 5:00 a.m., and well past 9:00 p.m., and definitely anytime during the weekends. Headlights and noise from various a.m. times when a truck delivers a trailer, and those backup beeps are loud and destructive. Well, where is accountability? Well, it all started when three of you, council member, voted yes, including you, Mayor McNamee, because if you denied your vote, it would be subject to legal challenges. And now today, with all the above conflicts I mentioned, and possibly more, you're now facing legal challenges regarding this project to get them to comply with the CUP, and you're putting the burden of this cost on the city. So with that, my family and I completely withdraw any support we ever had for you because you did not support our way of life, and because it has indeed changed the way we live. Oddly enough, the two council members, Robles and Hussey, who voted no, replied to many of my emails with nothing more than a sorry or a promise that our family concerns are being addressed. That's more of a meaningful reply than none. Thank you, the Odenbaugh family.
Thank you, Mrs. Odenbaugh. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll close public comment. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to new business. We have a report on the sale of childcare facilities proceeds. This will be presented by Terry Shea, interim finance director.
Your Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, a couple meetings ago, when we were discussing funding for the pension 115 trust, the council had asked to determine what happened to the proceeds from the fire, or for the childcare facility sale. So in July 2012, the city's childcare program was moved from the general fund to its own special revenue fund. The childcare services fund was to be self-supporting, including covering their portion of the UAL, which came a few years later. This resulted in a negative fund balance and the borrowing from the city's cash pool to cover the cost of the UAL. So on July 1, 2017, the city did a lease with FSA to run the program. June 30, 2018, FSA informed the city they would no longer be able to continue the service. Then at the city council meeting on July 10, the city council authorized the city to sell the property. 615,000 of the proceeds of the sale were to be committed to clear the childcare fund's negative fund balance. Then on September 11, 2018, which is fiscal year 2018-19, the property sold for 910,000, and the city received net proceeds of 850,000 after commissions of 60,000. So as of June 30, 2017, and I put copies of the audit reports in your binder, the city had, and the childcare fund had a negative 307,970 of fund balance. For 2017-18, the childcare fund's portion of the UAL was 145,728. There are other revenues and expenditures that amounted to 8,000, which then left us a negative fund balance and a negative cash balance at June 30, 2018, of 462,000. And then as of fiscal year 2018-19, we sold it for the net proceeds of 850. The 18-19 UAL portion was 145,700. We had a little bit more revenues because the cash was in there. We had some investment earnings. So the other revenues exceeded expenditures, which left us with a fund balance of 243,120. And so then, investment earnings in 1920 of 1,300, which left us at 244. And then at a city council meeting, I think in October of 19, I think it's in the staff report, council authorized the city to use 150,000 to fund the 1920 UAL because the employees that were there were still under the city's PERS plan. And then we transferred the final 94,000 to the general fund for future UALS. And so the fund balance at the end of June 30, 2020 was zero. So the money was used for the UAL, but it wasn't a discretionary payment made to PERS to pay down the liability. So that's what happened. And if you turn to packet page 56, you can see in 2015-16, when the UAL payment started, how the city has allocated it. And there was kind of a complex formula that Cynthia and Dolly were using. And so you can see the total UAL payment each year, and then what was allocated to the childcare. And, you know, over the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 years, it was about 787,000. So that's where the most of the proceeds went, was to cover that UAL payment. And you can see the UAL payment has gone up every year, and our funding has gone down every year. So that's why we want to do the Section 115 trust, put some money aside, and then be able to earn some money higher than we can normally earn, and then help pay down that UAL each year, and then free up other money for the budget. So any questions on the proceeds?
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Questions of staff? Councilmember Robles?
We need a refresher on UAL, and the public needs to know what a UAL is.
That's the unfunded accrued liability. CalPERS announced back in 2014-15, they were going to try to go everybody from a 30-year to a 20-year, and they were going to double your rates, but then they said, all right, that's not right. So they came up with this UAL portion, which is basically a debt service. And so part of that is interest and part of that is principal. And so they kept your monthly, your annual payments, your percentages pretty close to the same. Instead of raising those, they came up with this method, and I think in the staff report, over the 25 years, we're going to pay like a million, three in interest, and then principal to cover this. So, but that's what the UAL is, the unfunded accrued liability.
Now, is that triggered by the difference between what the target rate of earnings on the pension fund is versus the actual?
Yes. Then they lowered the discount rate, like a percentage.
So this is like a gap financing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, further questions? All right, seeing none. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So this is a receive and file, but do we have a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. All right. Under unfinished business, item six on our agenda, funding for PERS Section 115 trust. And again, Mr. Terry Shea, interim finance director.
Your Honorable Mayor, or City Council, back in the September meeting, September 13, 2022, the city council adopted Resolution 2022, I didn't put the number there, sorry, Deborah, authorizing participation in the PERS post-employment retirement trust, but we left the funded amount out. And so we're coming back to you now that we've had the discussion on where the childcare proceeds went, to come up with an initial funding. And we're recommending we use a portion of the fire department, or the fire building sale to fund that.
All right, questions of staff at this time? I was wondering what your recommendation was?
Our recommendation was a million dollars.
Okay. And do you have any projections of return on investment for these funds? I know we talked about them in the past, but I think that there's some apprehension that if we were for investing, that perhaps with the market fluctuations, we might end up in a place we're not too happy with.
You just have to do like I do with my 401K, just don't open the envelope for a year, so. Right now, I had that in the last staff meeting. I apologize.
So as long as you don't open the envelope, the losses don't take effect?
Right.
Yeah.
I apologize for not putting that in here, but I think it was like, we were going to choose like the median method, and it was about a 6% rate of return.
And what are most of the investments? And are they securities?
Most of them are, it's like, there's some that are heavy equities and some that are bonds. This one was weighted more towards the bonds.
Okay. Councilmember Robles?
Is there any reason why this can't wait until January? Let's look at the mid-year budget and do a more holistic spending plan?
We have the plan created, and obviously, the faster you put the money in there, the, you know, the more you're going to earn. But they won't cancel if we don't fund it today, but we just wanted to get it in there and growing, so.
Yeah, because the reason I say so is because we thought, I mean, I don't think, and the public didn't really understand, they thought we were taking childcare away. They didn't understand that it needed to be fee-supported because it was benefiting middle-class families. There was no authorization for us to spend taxpayer money on someone's private childcare. So, you know, we had half a million go down the drain from our city resources. So, and then, so we had a big sale, and we spent it on that, and we're still not much better off than a 69% funded ratio. So what my concern is, is that I approve all this money now, that's one-time money. What about, you know, having maybe a contract with the Boys and Girls Club or a satellite office here? You know, I don't know, a skate park was, you know, I don't even know if there is a location or what kind of financing, but I don't want to make decisions that hand tie me later down the road, is my point.
The beauty of this fund is that we can use it to cover that UAL next year if we arise in that situation. So if our UAL is a half a million next year, and you want to do something else, we can pull a half a million out and spend it and free up a half a million other money. Or we can use it for our monthly payroll that we send. So it's not lost, it's just sitting in another account, and we have more than enough pension expense to cover. If we have an emergency or if we have a downturn, then the money will be there, so.
And then one final question. Do we know what municipality in California has the highest funding ratio on their pension plan?
I do not, but it's, I mean, I could search it if you would like.
Well, the reason, because, you know, to me, if we're at 70%, I'm happy.
I think that was their target, was 70 to 80%. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mr. Shea, and I would like to ask you, who manages, is this that fund, that trust fund we were talking about earlier?
Yeah, it's, the investments are managed by Highmark Capital. The bank that houses is, I think it's US Bank.
So they choose the equities and the bonds that go into the fund?
Yeah, there's three. You know, you have a high risk, a medium risk, and a low risk. And the high risk is weighted more in equities, and then the medium is 50/50, and then the other one is mostly bonds, so.
Mayor Procham?
Thanks, Mr. Shea. I mean, you're talking, unlike Councilmember Robles' idea, you know, to show what we could get for, you know, this taxpayers' money who bought the fire department, just like the childcare, to have something to show for besides just keep paying, you know, off our funds for retirement. The thing is, you know, when you mention, you know, I watch the stock market and the GPA, you know, reports coming out Thursday, and it goes, I think, below, above 8.3%, and you're predicting 5% loss. But the thing is, the smart money is on the side, and there are cash equity. I mean, I don't think it's, I know you could do a 30-year wait, and it could fluctuate, you know, long-term, but what got me is what you just said about if we do it in January, we pull some money out. Are we selling the shares then, and we're going to be buying the shares, you know, and it's going to go down 20%, then we're selling it at a loss, or how's this going to work?
You run that risk if it does go down, and you have to sell, sure. But if it goes up, then our goal is for keeping in there over time, let it grow, and not try to pull it out within like a year or two. And then, you know, once we get that up there, because, you know, at 6%, 7%, it'll double in like 12 years or 13 years.
Yeah, we want to do the rule 21, but the thing is, if we want to pull it out, when it's, you know, like we have that, you know, we want to do that program, and we do sell on a downturn, so we're going to take a loss.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Allen?
But my understanding, when we were discussing this earlier, Mayor Procham, the idea was that this was not to have, this wasn't like some sort of a fund for us to tap into whenever we needed to do something if we didn't have enough money. This is something that we're trying to do to grow an investment, to pay our, to actually save money in the long run. Isn't that correct? Like a, it's a fairly substantial amount that we would be saving in the long run. Isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I understand that. It's just, like Councilmember Robles, you know, should we wait till January just in case we want to maybe invest this in some other group and then bring it back?
Would you like me to get some information from other cities of what they've done over the last year? Would that help?
I think it would help me, I think. I don't know about the other council.
Councilmember Robles?
That and some scenarios, you know, different, because if I were to say 250,000, and you guys said, well, we were told that a million wasn't enough even from some folks, so, you know, that'd be helpful, but, you know, really, I'm more leaning that taxpayers have been paying taxes, and they deserve to see some services. And we've already spent a million, or just short of a million, on this issue. And I don't think it's fair to put all the money in one bucket.
And your question is?
Well, I said...
Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
Where I was at on it.
How does the 115 trust help our credit rating?
It won't affect the credit rating at all, so.
Doesn't help? Okay.
Okay. Any more questions of staff? All right. We'll open it up for public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll come back for further discussion and deliberation and decision of what we want to do. And so, Councilmember Robles, I'm understanding that you'd like to wait, and that you're not too sure that spending money towards unfunded liabilities is a good thing to do with this money. But the thing that I look at here is that the more we pay that down and the less interest we're paying, the more we free up general fund money to do things for the residents. Because we are paying a large portion of interest on these unfunded liabilities, the longer it takes us to pay them off. And so if we are investing to then help us find a way to pay that off, then we free up money from the general fund.
I don't think you're going to see enough savings to fund anything really tangible, and we don't have those numbers.
Well, and I was expecting that we would have numbers.
Yeah, I was too.
Because that is something that does help to make the decision. So if you could come back and show us numbers, and give us a little bit of an overview of how other cities that have been doing it are finding the experience, that would be nice to have as well.
Yeah, I had the tables and stuff in the prior one. I should have re-put them in here. I apologize for that. And I will get some cities and their history of the last five years, so.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Five years would be great. Okay, any further discussion on this? Councilmember Robles?
Just one last thing for staff to understand where I'm coming from. The other thing, too, is we're going to be fully benefiting from the loss of RDA. So I think it's important for us as the policy body to have that more global financial perspective when we're making these decisions. So that's why I was waiting for mid-year, and I don't even think you need to make wait till mid-year, you could forecast that.
Yeah, the county has provided forecasts, but we'll get our first payment in the December 1st part of January, so.
All right. So, Councilmember Allen?
Mr. Shea offered, a few minutes ago, he said we'd like me to come back with some scenarios, and I like that idea. I'd like for him to come back with that, so I'd like to see.
Okay. And so, can we go with direction from staff? Is it you'll come back and bring us more information, and we'll determine if it makes sense to make a move now, or give another date that we'd like you to come back for that final decision?
Yeah, definitely. And you don't even have to like go to full million. You can say, let's just do 25 to get the account open, you know, 25,000 or something, right? Then we could go from there. On page 44 of the packet, it has the interest, so over the next 22 years, we're paying 3.7 million in interest. And so that's what we're trying to do, is cut into some of that and earn some of that back. But I apologize for not having the stuff in there, so.
All right. And also how this interleaves with the payment plan that we had looked at for paying it down early as well? And so how this would be, if, when you come back, you can show that this might be a tool for doing that.
Sure. And then, if you wanted to relook at changing the term of it to 10 years, or to eight years, or to seven, I think you can, as low as you can go is like 10 years, and then there's like a million-dollar savings if you do that, but you have to like commit. And then, so you take that unfunded liability and you pay it. When we get the new valuation out soon, I'll take a look at it and see where we're at, and see what, if that number has changed.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, appreciate your report. And so we will move on to item number H, which is a request for future agenda items by city council. And so this, of course, is just an opportunity for us to talk about whether something will come back to us for more exploration. And so I had a very zealous member of the public come to talk to me about, we need a post office in Grand Terrace. And now, this has been a subject that has come up before, but he was really ready to come and testify in front of city council that we need this. And I said, okay, well, wait a minute. City council doesn't get to decide that necessarily. It's the US Postal Service and the federal government. However, we could find out the steps for requesting one. And so that's what I'm asking, is would my fellow colleagues allow us to take the time to explore requesting a post office? I did get some information from our congressman that outlines the steps, and there's a little bit of work involved, and so it would, it would take some staff time to do it. And so that's my, that's my motion, that we explore the steps for securing a post office location.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Please vote.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you. All right, so council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to attend Joint Powers Insurance Agency's annual policy conference.
Risk management?
Risk management conference, yeah. So, the joint, the risk management conference. And I took, I learned a lot while I was there, and I don't want to, we can talk about everything I learned later on time, but I'll leave you with two thoughts that I took away from there that really impressed me, okay? So, one of the first sessions I attended was on Senate Bill 296, compliance mitigation of threats and hazards to code enforcement officers. And, you know, the code enforcement, our code enforcement officers, all code enforcement officers are disproportionately at risk of injury and threats, assaults, due to, just due to the nature of their duties. And it's incumbent upon us as a city to work together with our CEOs to develop safety standards specific to our jurisdiction, because they're different from each jurisdiction, evaluate our own risks and our future issues, and work together with them to accomplish this because our CEOs are one of the primary ways of reducing our city's liability.
And by CEO, you mean code enforcement officer?
That's right. Not our chief executive, my goodness. Yeah, our code enforcement officers are one of the primary ways our city reduces its liabilities, and so they're very important, and I really respect them. They got a big burden on their shoulders. I attended another session called Change Implementation and Management. It's pretty interesting. It was hosted by Jacob Green, who worked for many years for the City of Ontario, wrote a book, See Change Clearly. He worked his way up through the city staff there, and is quite successful now as a consultant. And so what I took away from his hour-long presentation is, so it's evolution, not revolution, that offers us our best shot at sustainable success. And cognitive diversity was something that he talked about quite a bit. And according to, this is from a Harvard Business Review study, "The best-performing teams have the most diverse members and ways of understanding the situations at hand, and because of these diverse life experiences and values, these teams are able to solve the most complex problems in the most efficient manner." The ones that are the most diverse. the most complex problems in the most efficient manner, the ones that are the most diverse. And that's, I thought that's pretty powerful. And so, the last thing I want to say is, Chamber of Commerce meeting at Woody's tomorrow morning at eight, and I look forward to that trunk-or-treat behind Walgreens on October thirty-one, which is Monday, at five P.M. I handed my hats off to the Historical and Cultural Committee for putting that on. I think that's who it is, right? Who, isn't it? Huh?
Nobody knows.
The city is sponsoring the event.
Well, yeah, but they're part of the city, the historical, kind of.
The Historical and Cultural Committee will be hosting their country fair.
Oh, the country fair.
They're bringing back the country fair.
That's in November, though, yeah.
Which looks good.
So the city's doing the trunk-or-treat?
Trunk-or-treat is city's.
Okay, well, my hat's off to the city for that, for the staff. And we'll get with the Historical Committee on their little shindig later. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Attended the state-of-the-county event last week, and it was a real whiz-bang presentation, state-of-the-art video and so on, a lot of music, very thumpy music, so it kept your attention. But what was the most interesting, because, you know, admittedly, it was a, it was kind of a presentation based on the idea, rah rah rah, you know, this is what the county's doing. What I really enjoyed was the event that preceded it, and that is a five-member panel on real estate status in the Inland Empire. And as it turns out, the commercial-residential portion of that was actually answered in the panel by Randall Lewis. And what he told us in a nutshell was, is that the real estate market is flat as a doornail for right now, other than maybe some industrial opportunities, and where we find our biggest difficulty is, is that for right now at least, a lot of lenders have put their pencils down, or they've made their requirements so stringent in order to be able to limit their, you know, future liability or, you know, exposure, that it's crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, and even at that, you may not actually end up closing a loan. So for right now, it's really tight, and it explains a little bit about, you know, what's been happening with our, the remainder of our properties. So I brought home some material, and be glad to hand it to the city manager, you can post it on the city website, but the people that were involved in it were top-of-the-line, absolute top-of-the-line individuals, involved with industrial, commercial, residential, just plain swapping properties and so on. So, and if we are listening to them, I would say that we've got a pretty good idea of where our finger is on the pulse. So it was, it was definitely worthwhile attending, and appreciated the opportunity. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I attended the Transportation Agency meeting, behalf of the mayor, who was at another important conference, and the two main agenda items were on the Cedar off-ramp, and some more money's being injected to that to alleviate the traffic issue there. There was also a presentation on the Bright Line train, which will be going through the Cucamonga area, and pretty fascinating stuff, I don't, I'm not sure if I saw it in the newspaper before, but there's kind of different multi-modal ways of transportation, including the underground way. So a lot of interesting things on the horizon for our area. The second thing that I'm glad I really went to was the UCR economic forecast, and I sent everybody the presentation, and he's the gentleman that, at the City-City Conference, provided an economic forecast, but at that time, things weren't as, as more solid of what we're going, and it's just fascinating, because he's saying, as far as the housing market, you know, the interest rates were driven so low, people raised their prices, and now if interest rates high, you know, people would have to reduce their prices, and so, he's saying there's not going to be an issue like in two thousand and eight, the fundamentals are different. When people qualified for the loans, they were solid. Savings is at one of the highest levels in thirty years, home equity is at the highest levels in thirty years. He's saying if people want a home, you can just get some of all that equity you have and buy another one, but it doesn't really help, because you can put a big down payment, but you're going to have property taxes and other fees that don't really, they don't go down when you put that big down payments. The other issue was the gas, and he was stating, well, the, there's a lot of money. He says, not only during the pandemic did the Jeff vessels make money, but the lower fifty percent of the population really benefited from the amount of stimulus that was out there, that there's a lot of cash out there. And in the Inland Empire, thirty-four percent of the cars being driven are SUVs, so people have choices to maybe drive a car that's more gas-efficient, but he says people really don't need it, because they really are doing better. He says landlords are pushing to get rid of rent controls, because they know that tenants have more money, and they want to tap into some of that. I'm trying to think of some of the other things, it was so, so much information. But the main, the main thing there is, before the pandemic, we were doing fine. Unemployment, because when you take Economics one-oh-one, they say full unemployment is at, when you have unemployment four percent, and we're like at three-point-two. The only place in California that wasn't doing well was Bakersfield. He says that Congress, both sides of the fence, just threw all this money at people during the pandemic, and it's all on borrowing, which of course is going to affect, you know, our young people down, down the road. So, interesting, interesting information, and it really helps, I think, for us to go to those conferences, because when we're saying, if we get a hotel proposal, and somebody comes and says, well, why would you do that? The economy's no good, who's going to stay there? Nobody can afford to. Well, we have data, we have economic information that helps us with our policy decisions. And the final thing, I just want to make a clarification on my vote on the O'Brien project that Mrs. Oldenburg's having a lot of issues with. Came to my attention that, that it was stated that this project had to be voted on, and my question to Adrian on the phone, and I said I was going to ask him publicly, now my understanding on the conditional use permit, it went through the Planning Commission and was vetted, the citizens came and asked to appeal to this legislative body on the noise, excuse me, on the traffic issue. So when I vetted it, I read in here that there would be, when strictly counted, the project would generate five-hundred-and-thirty daily trips, twenty-six and thirteen trips each in the AM peak hour, and there would be ninety-six passenger vehicles, fifty-two axle trucks, and two-hundred-and-twenty-three axle trucks, and just the pure number almost approaching seven-hundred, yeah, they're going to park somewhere, was my feeling, but they have to get there and they have to leave. So when I voted against this, it was based on the fact that I didn't feel that, that they met the requirements on what would be acceptable as far as truck traffic. And there was also a feeling that, from other bodies, that they fit with the existing zoning, and I disagreed with that. For Mrs. Oldenbeck, I give short responses, because also in my role, if we get sued, I have to be careful what I say publicly about a project. Can you explain, city manager, to her, what's going on right now, and me? What can we talk about?
Other than we're doing the enforcement that we can, writing citations that are reasonable, that is it. Everything else is because of suspending litigation, we don't want to go into any of the details, and cannot go into any details beyond that.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended your Omni Board of Directors meeting, October fifth, via Zoom, and said a couple of things, you know, the board compensation policy, they voted that for increase, twenty-five dollars. But what got me is the electric bus performance update. My son, he works on electric buses in South Carolina, he's a diesel mechanic, but he got hired for that, and it's pretty interesting, I went to his shop to see how it works and everything, and it's a whole different realm, you know, but they got it down pat, their ridership were in South Carolina, Greenville, you know, there's a lot of people taking the community buses and stuff here, and, and they said, you know, because there's more buses en route, you know, they're not waiting as long and stuff. They said the main thing what happened on those buses, that the drivers don't bleed the air system and stuff, and everything just locks up. But it was interesting, he was talking also about the twenty percent battery rate, which OmniTrans talked about the battery rate, and how you had to keep a certain battery level for the bus. But they went into, because I remember when I was there, and I took, or I think when Ms. Robles was in charge of it, they talked about the CNG and the propane and stuff, and how they had a bonds to do that, and they're, you know, it's going to be cheaper just to pipe it in. So they did a comparison on that, from the CNG to, from the electric, I got it right here. So the CNG per mile, parts and labor is forty-six cents, and the fuel's twenty-two cents fuel for the, per mile, for fuel electricity. Now, the battery, electric buses, for parts and labor, average like thirteen cents per mile, and then electricity's sixty-one cents a mile. So you look at it as like a six-cent difference, and they were talking about hydrogen and stuff, but there's not enough area to, for the storage and everything, so that's pretty interesting. Another thing was on the OmniRide, microtransit, you know, they have the four dollars per ride. That's a neat program, I like to see it come up here to Grand Terrace, because they were talking about Loma Linda and going to the university and stuff, so four dollars a ride, and you're not waiting as long, and it's, you know, a heck of a lot cheaper for Uber. I think we mentioned something that Uber was, you mentioned that Uber was going to do that with OmniTrans at one time, so that's pretty interesting, but yeah. So that's pretty much it, Mayor, they just, you know, talk about the different prices and, you know, what's costing, and they're looking into more electric vehicles in the long run, but, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right. Well, I appreciate my colleagues attending SBCTA and OmniTrans for me. I went to the risk management conference for the JPIA, and so, not to repeat the conversation that Councilmember Allen had, I will talk about, first off, the keynote speaker talked about leadership before, during, and after the crisis. He is the chief of police for Boston, and he was recounting his efforts during the Boston Marathon bombing, and everything that he had gone through is a really good example of crisis management and leadership, and he, he really painted a strong picture for how that must have been. But the takeaway from his, from his discussion, parallels with last conference discussion, which is that you plan for the best, but you train for the, for the things that go wrong. And one of the things that he really emphasized was, when you have human beings involved in a crisis, they are very caught up in the crisis and the simple things they're not able to do, because they're not practiced in doing them. But the things that they're practiced in doing become second nature, and they know how to do that. And so, again, much like last year's conference, you know, you want to plan for the best, but you also want to train in case something goes wrong, so that you can fall back on that training in that moment of horror and, and just sheer crisis that shocks the human system in what they see. And so to me, that was the big takeaway, plus he's a very good speaker. A couple of other, I did go to the, to the code compliance mitigation of hazards, and that was very good. I will have the slide deck for city manager, if he'd like to see that, and so that he can get the particulars of the laws that they quoted, and some of the things to think about. And then I also looked at, or I went to a session on traffic studies and crosswalk cases, which was a really interesting way of looking at mitigating issues at crosswalks and the things that need to go into that. And so instead of getting into a lot of detail, again, I'll have the slide deck for that, that can, that can allow you to see the particulars that they discussed, and some of the ordinances that are in effect in other places. And so that will be it for me. And city manager, do you have communications for us?
No, no information.
All right. Well, with that, then we will recess to closed session. We have two items for closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two cases of that, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-C, and significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-B. And so at this time, we are in recess to closed session. All right, we'll reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session for two items, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-C, and conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-B. Direction was given to staff, no reportable actions taken. So at this time, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting that will be held Tuesday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six P.M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. Request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.